Yes, Mr. Canada.
My Lord, I was dealing with, or I was about to deal with, the exchange of correspondence that occurred between the two meetings. Can I say immediately, just as I did, albeit in slightly different terms, in front of Mrs. Justice Thornton who did that, that I adopt and accept my Lord-in-law Justice Stuart Smith's proposition that this was a suboptimal exercise to go through. I said that below, and her ladyship records that in the judgment. It was not best practice, I think, was the phrase used below. And that's right, but I want to be clear that I accept that. I'm not saying this was something that ought to be repeated generally, but I just want to take your ladyship's, your relationship to a couple of the references, just to be, if for no other reason, just to be actually clear about what was going on. The first place I made is the witness statement of Kirsty Dougal, which we haven't read to you yet, which is at page 345 of the supplementary bundle. Now, she says, this is just to be clear, obviously, this is a witness statement produced for the hearing, did that, something like it. And in paragraph six, in response to something that solicited for the claimant, Helen, in evidence, she says, it just makes clear, and I'm paraphrasing, that the only action she took was to send her first draft of the report to Mr. Holmes, her superior, copying her line manager, Sarah Hill Sanders. And that's it. She isn't involved in any further exchanges. She isn't copied in in the exchanges between Mrs. Holmes and McCrory. The one email from Counselor Sozin doesn't copy her in. She, I don't know if it wished to downplay her involvement, but plays no further part in that exchange. And what then happens is dealt with by Mr. Holmes in his witness statement, which is at page 349, so a few pages further on. At paragraph four, he picks up the story, the draft report was all he needs forwarded to me, and the case officer, Kirsty Dougal, on 15th, I made some changes that I felt appropriate to make clear to the committee, the office of professional views on proposals and the options available to committee in determining application. And then he forwarded it to David Green, who's the head of planning, copying in an officer, copying in Counselor Sozin as chair of the committee, and Counselor McCrory as cabinet member, in case they wish to make any comments there. First point is that Counselor McCrory is a member, but isn't a member of the planning commission. He plays no part in either of the two meetings. So the only member who does is Counselor Sozin, the chair.
Right.
And Counselor McCrory is the mic referred to in Counselor Sozin's, you know, assembly. So, and then he...
So, I'm sorry, Counselor McCrory is the cabinet member for what?
For planning.
For planning.
Yes.
Right. But not, you say, part of this committee?
Not on the committee, on either, on either case.
Right.
Whether he's on the committee in the general sense, I just don't know, but he wasn't a member of either of the committees, whether the first meeting or the second.
Yeah.
And then the emails themselves, I know we've been to them in some detail, but just to draw all that together, the first one to look at is at page 175 of the supplementary bundle. I just want to make a few brief observations about what's going on here. All of them, the caveat that I made at the beginning of the identity, it's great practice. So, 175...
And it's not best practice because?
Because I think officers could have dealt with this themselves. I don't think they needed the chair, and I don't think they needed Counselor McCrory. But that's, that's an observation, and I say that doesn't go anywhere near ground three or did any of the grounds. I think generally, it would have been more sensible for officers who were there perhaps to ask the legal advisor what precise indications of what had happened in the first meeting or whatever. So there's what I was about to say, yeah, that's why I say that. So, 175, Heath Holmes sends Ms. Dougal's draft report with his changes to David Green, and he says he's beefed up 1.3 and 1.4, and says, is this okay, or do you want something more overt? I just pause to say there's a suggestion in the, Helen, this is an argument, that that email, the language of, do you want something more overt, was from Ms. Dougal, but that's just wrong, it's Mr. Holmes. And the second point is that, for what it's worth, Counselor Sozin, who's copied in here, is the chair, but she's also somebody who voted to follow the officer's recommendation both times. So in the first meeting, she was on the side of following the officer's recommendation to refuse. And was also one of the ten who voted that way at the second meeting. But she is also the answer, as the email on the page before, 174, I see my lady has the point, back to the point made this morning, which is her asking earlier in this email, 17th, quite what was going to happen, the president should be, you'll be giving the reasons to approve as per our decision, part of the Learn Friends case, that rather indicates that, as I understand it, that Counselor Sozin was of the view, that they'd done rather more than just defer, as I understand the Learn Friends, particularly, that document. What I say is that, in the context of open minds, shows clearly that she had a mind open for what it's worth. But can I say immediately that I endorse gratefully the observation, it was my Lord-in-law, Justice Stuart Smith, made, that there is nothing beyond Counselor Sozin. None of these emails go to any other member of the committee on either occasion. There's no suggestion that their contents were passed on to anyone else. I don't know, the Friend's case just doesn't get it further than Counselor Sozin.
But what they don't show is Counselor Sozin putting any pressure, improper or otherwise, on anyone, or even making the suggestion that the report be changed in any way. She starts by saying, rather assuming that what the planning officers are going to do are coming up with reasons for approval, having herself voted against it.
Yeah.
And that's what she's, that's her mindset. And then, as a result of the passage of time and various other people putting input in, the report makes it clear that you don't have to approve it, you could still refuse.
Yes, that's, that's quite right.
But that doesn't come from her at all, as I assume.
No, indeed, none of the, there's no further email from her until the one on page 179, where she says, yes, I'm happy with that final version. The other exchanges are between officers, essentially, there's one from Counselor McCrory to Mr. Holmes, I mean, there is one on page 177, but it's, and it's from Counselor Sozin, but it's squarely in the context of the procedural question, not the merits, as it were. I agree more emphasis on the emails, we go back to the recommendation, if these will help. And then, 177, sorry, 180, Mr. Holmes sends two possible versions of paragraph 1.6, which describes the procedural position. Counselor McCrory, on that same page, page 180, says, I prefer the second shorter suggestion, but he, it happens he's ignored, and it's the longer version that finds its way into the second further report. I don't say any more about that, I don't know why, but... And then the final version is approved by Counselor, what it's worth, by Counselor Sozin's email on 179. And my friend made, I'll sort to make something of, mentioning a couple of these emails about reasons, and whether they had been drafted or were expected to be drafted, or they hadn't ever seen them. Well, that question is dealt with by Ms. Dougal in her witness statement that she produced for the hearing below. And the answer is that none were drawn up. She says that, so, none were. The, it's page 346 of the supplementary bundle. Paragraph 10, she said, I didn't consider that reasons for approval were necessary in the report for the second meeting. Firstly, it was clear to me that a decision had not been made, so there were no reasons for approval to draft. Secondly, members would have been aware of the previous meeting for better minutes, and agreed the notice is correct at the start of the second meeting. So, on the factual point, no good reasons were ever drawn up, the question was left at that large. So any references to an expectation might come, I read in that context. And I adopt gratefully the observation by my Lord-in-law, Justice Stuart Smith, that these emails have not been drafted by lawyers in any event. Perhaps their language should be judged on another way. Last, last couple of places in the tour, page 93 of the supplementary bundle is the green sheet, I don't think we've been there yet. This is produced after the further report, but before the second meeting. And it's at page 93. And it's really in two parts, there's an update about the progress of the enforcement appeal in respect of the unlawful use of part of that green field, part of the land, which notes that the effective decision has been issued and time of compliance has been extended. And then the second part is a verbatim setting out to the end of a representation that had been received in the meantime. The sentence says additional representation, since the court, an additional representation of local residents being received, representation set, and the remainder of the green sheet is that representation set out in full. And that, I don't think it's any secret that that, in fact, was from a Mr. Philpot, a neighbouring landlord, who was supportive of the officer's recommendation, didn't want permission to be granted for these houses. And the only point I just highlighted is right at bottom of page 93, under two, he said, I can see no reference to the planning application, a plan which shows the actual, the actual, in the CCC, Justice Counselor adopted legal plan, size of the rural employment aid. This is important, especially if several counties refer to the site being in the rural employment aid and the brownfield side, this is not the case. And then he sets out the figures which I mentioned at the start, albeit that his numbers are slightly wrong, but not very bad. So that is circulated to councillors in advance of the second meeting, and to the applicant for planning commission, who's the interested party in this thing, not here. And then the second meeting, transcript of which, sorry, minutes of which, first of all, are at date nine. I'm not going to come back to this, but it will be my submission, second part of my submission on ground two, that on the second page of those minutes, page 90, in terms, the committee both acknowledged that there was a minded to decision on the previous occasion, had been minded to approve application contrary to the recommendation of officers, and had deferred, this is halfway down, page 90. And grapples head on, in the paragraph beginning there, was extensive discussion on the application with the change of position. The final point is that the, I don't need to go to transcript of that meeting, the points were already made, that the introduction was not, there was no, no need to mercuri the suggestion in the introduction, that all options were over, and I've made that point already, the refusal of planning commission was for the four reasons in the officer's report. And the refusal is at 152 to 154 of the call button. We don't need to go there. So the ultimate decision is to follow the recommendation of the officer. The phase two of my submission, I hope it to be relatively unconventional, I can take this with a proposition. The first is about resolutions generally, common ground, that even where a planning authority has made a resolution to grant or refuse planning commission, but it's usually granted, that decision doesn't take effect until it's notified to the applicant by notice. And that's Burke it. And if references are needed, it's Lord Stane, who gives the leading judgment of 39 and 51, table one of the authorities' bundle, and Lord Slim, paragraph five, encapsulates the proposition neatly. That, of course, is a case about when time began to run for a public challenge to the decision. It's in that context that the point is made. I just paused to say that that can be instructive of this question. One of the ways about, one of the ways to attack, correct the question of what was decided on the first occasion was, could it, would time have started to run for a challenge to it? And my submission would be, unless it was to the procedural nature of the decision, if it had somehow been contrary to the constitution or taken improperly, then plainly no challenge to the substance could possibly have been advanced from that point. And then the second proposition, the second proposition related to that one is that in between a resolution to grant and issuing a decision, a planning authority may change its mind, so a resolution is not binding. And they can do that even where there's no material change in circumstances. That's a combination of Burke it again, and King's Cross, which is a tattoo of the authorities' bundle. The references are paragraph of King's Cross, paragraph 14, one, and 20. But if they want to do so, change their minds, then they are subject to the requirement to grasp the intellectual nettle of the change of position, and that's important. So even where a planning authority does reach a concluded resolution to grant planning commission, which is not what we say happens here, but even where they do, they're not concluded from changing their mind at all, the only constraint on them in appropriate circumstances is to grapple or grasp the intellectual nettle of the change and the explanation. And I say that because at times, although I think not today, my learned friend's arguments seem to veer towards saying that they were somehow bound to grant mission, full stop. I think my learned friend's are from that today, and the question is really, was the decision such that they had to grasp the intellectual nettle of the change? Second proposition is about the constitution, or the code of good practices, called, and I made the point earlier about that language. It's at page 13 of the supplementary bundle. And the particular, I think the root to it is, is common ground, that page 13 is the functions of the planning committee, and then page 14 is the requirement that in carrying out those functions, they shall operate in accordance with the code, that's 4.2.25.3. And then the code is where we find 5.2.7. And I just make the observation at the outset, that in front of the learned judge, ground one of the claim was that counsel had misunderstood or failed to follow this constitutional And that was argued, and the learned judge came to a conclusion about what the constitutional provisions meant. And I don't detect any challenge to that in this appeal, so as to what they mean, not wanting to take a jurisdictional point, having expressed themselves to be neutral on another one, that is the effect of, as I understand it, of the non-appeal against the learned judge's below conclusions about the meaning of the constitutional provision. Here, in this court, it's become about the meaning of the resolution, but below is about the constitutional provision. And just briefly, our submissions, which I think are now clear on what this means, the heading is a general heading, decisions contrary to officer's recommendation, that is decisions to grant where the recommendation is refused, or to refuse where the recommendation is to grant, applies to both, and it's nonspecific as to what kind of planning application would it be outlined or detailed. It's general. And the next point, if the planning committee wants to make a decision, necessarily anterior to the making of the decision, I say, in chronological terms or conceptual terms, prior to the making of the decision. And the first sentence taken as a whole, we say, is a general step, is a general requirement. If the planning committee wants to make a decision contrary to officer's recommendation, the material planning reasons for doing so should be clearly stated, freely admitted. I pause to say that's really no more than a reflection of the common law and statute. Statute says that if you refuse planning commission, you must give reasons. The common law has, sorry, statute has no equivalent requirement for a grant of planning commission, but the common law, cases aren't in the authorities' bundle, but they come in, the case of Dover, although there's no statutory requirement to give reasons for a grant of planning commission, in certain cases, the common law will require the giving of reasons, one of which is, and it's case by case, but one of the pointers is a decision contrary to the recommendation. And that's, if I may say so, self-evident, because if you follow the recommendation of the officer's report, then the report is implied to be the reasons for the decision, whereas if you fail to follow it or decline to follow it, then the reasons are at large. And then what follows is the mechanism for dealing with that situation, where it arises that the committee wants to make a decision contrary to the officer's report. And on plain words, as found by the learned judge below, the application should be deferred. And my first point is a straightforward, perhaps Holmes' one point, which is deferred means exactly that, it doesn't mean anything other than put off to another occasion. The application, they can't decide it there and then, prohibition on doing so. There must be a deferral, and the deferral is for consideration of appropriate conditions and reasons, and the implications of such a decision clearly explained in the report back. Conditions only arise where the proposition is an intended grant. There'd be no requirement to consider conditions if this were the other kind of case, where officer's recommendation was approved or intentional was to refuse. Reasons arises in both cases, and the implications clearly explained in my submission is a wholly separate, freestanding point, as recognised by the judge below, the judge below, which points to exactly, I think my Lord Justice Holroyd said this morning, exactly the point about breathing space. If you want to go against the recommendations of your professional officers, we pause, and the implications of that are explained, because the implications of doing so are different than are the implications of following an officer's recommendation. The chances of challenge are much higher, the ability to defend the decision is more difficult, at least in principle. And it's paragraph 39 and 40 of the decision of Mrs. Justice Thornton. In the draft judgment, that is on page 73, of the call button. 39, she makes a point about natural ordinary meaning. She then makes a point about 5.2.7.2. And then at 40, she makes a point that I've just made, which I adopt. The claimant, as was, interpretation of 5.2.7, that's point one, the last sentence indications, don't work together. There would be no point in second, second or third sentence, there would be no point in a report on the implications of the committee's decision if it had already been made, according to the purpose of pause in decision-making, or considerations to ensure that members have all the necessary information, including conditions, which in the circumstance of this case were not given, given the officer's recommendation, and understand the implications of that proposed cause of action, and may subsequently come to take their decision. In appropriate cases, the purpose may also be to ensure that the decision can be properly defended, whatever the appeal. There's only one reason for a provision of that nature, or only one context for it, which is that the decision can be reversed, the decision hasn't been taken and can be different. Third proposition, or third set of propositions, is that the committee were attempting to follow that constitutional apparatus, that constitutional path. follow that constitutional apparatus, that constitutional path. The words that counsel Roper uses when he proposes his motion are almost identical to that constitutional provision, minded to, and so on. And if I may, I'll just posit a interpretation of minded to. Because at points this morning, it appeared that the learned friend's case was that there were really only two points on the continuum, as it were, that mattered. Either the reasons for refusal were, any one of them was upheld or accepted, or if not, the principle was established and we go forward. But of course, there's a bit of space between those, I say. You can be not persuaded by reasons for refusal, or not yet persuaded by reasons for refusal, but not yet reaching the point that you accept the principle of the application, but the grounds on which you're being told you ought to refuse it have yet to persuade you that you should do so. I'm not saying that necessarily happened here, I don't need to for the purposes of my submission, but there is a continuum, and it isn't just those two points. The point is that as soon as the point is reached that there's a minded to, a crystallization of the minded to position, then that requires deference, dumps a draw, and take a pause or breathing space, to use the judge's language, and come back another day. And that the committee were attempting to follow and thought they were following the Constitution is underlined by the lack of any dissent, either in approving the minutes, or having received a further report, or when that same advice was reiterated at the start of the second meeting. Not a sole sense, hang on a minute, I thought we'd already decided. And in fact, on page ninety nine of the supplementary bundle, which is the transcript of the second meeting. One sees, starts at ninety seven, the chair gives the introduction that we've looked at already. Counselors Lee, Porter and Dobson say something, all of whom were in favour of following the officer's recommendation at the first meeting, and basically expressed themselves not to have changed their mind. The first person who was not of that mind at the first meeting is counsel Frascona. The first counsel who was in favour of granting planning permission speaks at ninety nine. And she doesn't say, well, hang on a minute, I thought we'd decided. And she might well have, because she was in the majority, as it were, the first time.
Interesting she uses the word I'm still minded to support the development.
Yes. Even then, of course, she hasn't made up her mind. But when it comes to the vote, counsel Frascona votes again, saying she's the one in the ten one.
She describes the conditions, she looks at the conditions.
Yes. Yeah, her position is this.
Still didn't say that.
Yeah, this is a good application, it replaces something that's harmful, we get affordable housing, I'm in favour broadly. And she's the one that votes for it. But my point is, and I think I've made it already, is that if there were any confusion in the minds of anyone about what happened on the first occasion, it would have come out in her speech at that time, and it doesn't. In fact, the contrary comes out, still minded to. Fourth proposition, really a development of that same one, nothing that I have said or will say resiles from or steps away from the fact that it was clear that at the first meeting, the majority wanted to grant planning permission contrary to the officer's report. That was where they got to, eight of them. And that is, of course, the essential context for where they got to. Had that not been true, there would have been no question of deferring. I can't get away from that. But the Constitution prohibited them from doing so, and they knew that. And then fifthly, and I think this is probably partially clear now, in case it's not, I'll just say these things, the decision on the third of November was a decision, undoubtedly, a decision to defer. The real question is the nature of that decision and its effects. A procedural decision, we say, but one which didn't limit the byre's of procedure when it came back on the twelfth of January. It was a decision that paused the process when they wanted to go. And related to that, I'm just mindful of my Lord, your Justice Stuart Smith's comments on granting permission. This hasn't been canvassed yet, but I'll just answer, if I may, or attempt to answer, the point about interested parties. My Lord made the observation in granting permission that if no decision had been made, why then were interested parties excluded from making comments on the second meeting? I'm not expressing it in any way as eloquently as it's expressed, because I'm not equating it with it. It's at page two. In my judgment, it seems also a potential difficulty arising from the terms of the Constitution, the judge's conclusion that no decision at all was made. If that's right, it's hard to understand why interested parties were not allowed to address the committee at the later meeting, despite the interim changes. In the learned judge's decision, judgment, paragraphs twenty two to twenty three, the judge sets out a summary, and it's an accurate summary, of exchanges with interested parties, all I small P, between the first and second meetings. And I go here only because it gets confusing, because the claimant and appellant here is not the applicant for planning permission. Claimant and appellant here was a supportive third party to the planning application. And so was an, small I, interested, small P, party, at application stage. And the applicant for planning permission, who was the applicant there, interested party, big I, big P, in this claim, albeit not representative, so there's a potential for confusion. The exchange between them is at paragraphs, pages one, two, four to one thirteen of the supplementary bundle.
Page one, two, four.
Yes.
Thank you.
And paraphrasing as best I can, the applicant for planning permission, Mr. Sharp, by his agent, Mr. Rowe, was sent a green sheet and was initially told, on page one hundred and twenty four, that there's no opportunity to speak again. That's the email from Kirsty Dugald in the second half, bottom of page one hundred and My understanding, she says in response to the request, up on the seventh of January, she says, my understanding is that because the item is returning to the committee, there's no opportunity to speak again, but ask Brian Mayfield. And then Brian Mayfield confirms, Kirsty's correct, in saying the opportunity for questions is the same, the person to the committee in that past, he won't be able to recede from his hearing. But he's then later clarified on page one hundred and twenty six.
Do you think it did written representations?
Quite so.
Which is only fair because of Mr. Philpott's interjections.
Exactly, exactly. And that fairness did require that the applicant for planning permission be entitled to respond to something said and said against him. Ground three below was that there was an unfairness in not extending that same opportunity to the claimant, our appellant. That was rejected by the learned judge, and no appeal against that finding given that. And part of that, for what it's worth, not very much, I think, is that, of course, the claimant, Mr. Black, didn't attempt to or ask to make any further contributions, and talk of him being excluded from doing so is inept. Neither he or any other interested party, all I small P, attempted to make any further So with those propositions and no doubt relief, can I turn to my submission, which I hope could be necessarily a bit shorter than they would have been had I not taken time over that. Ground one, essentially, the judge was correct, paragraphs thirty one to thirty seven, as to the effect of the resolution. And we say that whether the transcript recording of that resolution put by counsel Roper, or the version recorded in the minutes, is the one to which we look, meaning is the same. It was a resolution to pause the decision-making process at that point, defer it as required by the Constitution. And that is also, even leaving aside the constitutional context, which he says is central, it's also the ordinary meaning of the words, defer consideration. It could have said, for example, the committee resolved to grant planning permission subject to suitable conditions, or something. I say could have, hypothetically could have, in the appropriate case. Difficult to see a case where, in the absence of any conditions, that would be a sensible way forward, but hypothetically, it could have said something else. And it certainly could have said, we've decided the principle, and we're only left to, for population, only left to decide what conditions to apply, but it didn't say defer. And the lack of disquiet, the lack of any disquiet about the way that was described in multiple places, underlines that, the intention. And the further context of all this is that doing so, following that constitutional procedure, having a constitutional procedure that provides for a pause in those circumstances, is important because of the nature of the exercise, which in very general terms requires a consideration of whether application is in line with the development plan. And if it is, granting it unless material considerations indicate otherwise. Or the contrary of that, does the development plan require refusal, only granting if there are material considerations? And there's a raft of cases, none of which I need trouble, your lordship, with, that say that if nothing else is required from a decision-maker in planning, it's acknowledgement of that statutory formulation, that the development plan has primacy, and only where material considerations justify a departure, can a departure lawfully follow. And that's why, that context for the decision is why, if you're going to go against the officer recommendation, who's set out their professional view about this, you need a pause, take a step back. Do you want to do this? Implications of doing this are X, Y, Z, possibility of changing ones. It's a safety lock. That's all I'll say on ground one, but ground one and ground two necessarily flow into one another, so it may be that I need to say a little more about it. But again, we adopt, specifically the reasoning of the learned judge, paragraph forty nine, as to the question of grasping the intellectual nettle, does the decision on the first hearing require that? It didn't require that. What was decided is really ground one, and I've said all I want to say about that. There's nothing of substance between the minutes and the transcript, so the diverting, but essentially irrelevant question about BB and recourse to transcript doesn't arise in our submission. There was no substantive decision reached on the merits of the planning application. The decision reached was to defer because the members were minded to, just as they said, and knew they couldn't because of the Constitution. They were not doing what the decision-makers in any of the cases on the consistency principle in this case were doing, which was going a different way from a previous decision-maker who had considered the matter fully and reached a concluded view. And I'll just briefly make that good, I don't want to take very long to play with this. First is St Albans, tab three, the authorities' bundle. Now, in St Albans, I'm paraphrasing considerably, the question at large was the treatment of a previous decision by the Secretary of State on materially similar application, so not a, nothing uncertain about it, nothing conditional, it was a final decision by the Secretary of State on a planning application. One can see that from paragraphs twenty five to twenty eight of the judgment of Mr. Justice Holgate. Well, it starts with twenty five, they're talking about King's Cross there, I notice Paragraph one sets out the decision on the challenge, which was a decision to grant planning permission for strategic welfare, freight interchange. And then at paragraph five, the proposal has been subject to two planning applications. First was made in two thousand and six, and refused, public inquiry sent through November, December two thousand and seven, main issue, the inspector's report. And then there's seven, the Secretary of State's decision on the first appeal was issued on the first of October, broadly agreeing with the inspector's conclusions and accepting the recommendation to dismiss the appeal. So the previous decision, the intellectual nettle on which needed to be grappled or grasped, was a Secretary of State decision to refute that. Complete with reasons and an officer's report, sorry, an inspector's report, which was followed. King's Cross, which is tab two, the previous decision was a resolution to grant planning permission, subject to section one oh six. So we say one step further along the process of deciding the application, some time in the, in the past, a period of time has passed between that resolution and the decision. Paragraph seven.
Page?
Page twenty seven.
Thank you.
Having considered all the arguments, the subcommittee has all the conditional outline planning should be granted, subject to refer of the application to the Secretary of State and the Mary of London and the completion of section one oh six. and Mayor of London and the completion of section one oh six. And the Secretary of State and the Mayor confirmed that would be made according. So that was perhaps one run lower down in the hierarchy of completed planning decisions in the resolution to grant subject to section one oh six. One run leads ahead of the decision we're concerned with here. And North Wiltshire, which is often the source of the proposition about grasping the nettle of the previous decision. In that case, I don't take the Wiltshire version to the reference. That was about previous appeal decisions by the inspector. Again, with. And the point I make is that what happened in all of those cases was the very thing that was prohibited by the Constitution from happening in this case. And it didn't happen. And just a final tailpiece on that point. The idea of requirement to grasp the intellectual nettle of this agreement with a past decision necessarily requires engagement with the reasons for that past decision. Why was that made? And in all of those cases, we've got that. But in this case, we haven't.
Well, that was one of the reasons I asked.
Quite so.
That I did, which is, well, assuming that you have a decision to reject the planning officer's recommendations, the Constitution says you've got to give reasons, you've got to spell them out. And there aren't any, and you can't infer them from the minutes. So.
Where's the nettle?
Yes.
Yeah. Quite so. And of course, my lady, my learned friend stopped short rightly saying, well, you could look at the transcript for the reason. Because you can't do that because of cross.
No, of course you can't.
So there isn't a nettle, if I can put it that way.
Yeah.
But if I'm wrong, second part of my proposition on ground two is that they did grapple with the implications of the first meeting. And I'll just show you some references that make that point. They're all in the transcript of the second meeting. We start on page ninety-nine, supplementary bundle. And I took Your Lordship, Your relationship, a short while ago to the defence of Counselor Frasco. The next person to speak is Counselor Shaw.
He picks up the point that's in the, on the green sheet.
My lady is ahead of me.
Yeah, well, I had it underlined while you were going through it. So you've got something new, which wasn't there at the first meeting, which is that it is being pointed out that contrary to the way in which it was presented before, this isn't just Brownfield or existing employment site, but at least half of it or round about half of it is Greenfield. And that seems to have swayed Counselor Shaw and also Counselor Ayers.
Two steps ahead of me. Quite so. And I want to be careful about this because that site was a mixture of colloquially Greenfield countryside was before the committee at the first meeting. That was in the officer's report. Officer's report with a diligent description of that. But what does seem to have landed was the relative proportion of each.
Yes.
And that did land, at least with Counselors Shaw, Ayers and Highland. When they read Mr Philpott's point in the green sheet, which I took to note. The Counselor Shaw at a hundred, Counselor Ayers at the bottom of a hundred. So Counselor Shaw was in the majority first time round, changed his mind. Counselor Ayers abstained first time round within the majority second time. And she says, I hope that I can be convinced this was the right decision. But on reflection, I don't feel the conditions are compelling enough to overturn our local plan, which has only just been approved. Not a couple of houses in fifty-five. Other councillors have raised points about the overhead line and the fact that we occupy a Greenfield site. And based on that, I might not support the application. She changes her mind and explains why. Counselor Highland is the next one. We voted in the majority first time, page one hundred and one.
He's changed his mind.
He changed his mind and explained why. That's the missing map that showed the four point five acres of Greenfield land that we'd be committing to development. Now, I want to be careful. I'm not suggesting that these were necessarily good or sound or decisions that we should come to. I don't need to. But they are grappling with the change of mind head-on. And then Counselor Ashley comes in on page one hundred and five and she says about half, she turns to the next one because there's a bit of technological glitching going on in the meantime. Which rather interferes with Mr Counselor Lee's comments. He's a refuse, refuse. He's not a mind changer. But Counselor Ashley is the next one. She says, yeah, Madam Chair, yes, I'd like to support the officers this time. And at the bottom of one oh five, as the green sheet had said, and was quite enlightening, and I feel that actually Inspector's decision as well, that's the decision on the enforcement case, that confirmed that unlawful activity would be brought to an end, albeit three months later than it was originally required to by the enforcement. And the other, as in loss of countryside. So that's my point. So she says why. Now, as it happens, that's it in terms of councillors. But the other ones who voted in the majority the first time, Counselor Hughes abstains because she turns up late at the second meeting. So she says, for reasons unconnected to substance, I'm not going to vote against, because I've missed the beginning of the meeting. She's, I'm paraphrasing. She originally says, I'm going to vote against, but then she's told by, I think what you mean is abstain. And she said, yes, that is why. That's page one hundred and thirteen through to one hundred and forty. Amazingly, she says, I'm going to vote against. And then Mr Mayfield says, then I'll advise you, I think you mean abstain. And she said, yes, that's what I said, abstain. Counselor Roper, who proposed the notion, doesn't say anything, but he abstains. And the missing two from the eight are Counselors.
Sorry, where's Roper?
Where is?
Where is Mr Roper?
He says on page one hundred and fifteen, abstain. Doesn't see to explain anything about why. And then the other two from the first meeting, in the majority, were Councillors Shepherd and Davidson, who don't turn up.
So of the councillors who actually switched their votes in a positive way, all of them have explained why.
Yes.
And it's generally by reference to the Greenfield and the proposed development on that.
Yes, there are other points.
There are other points, but that's a common connection.
And just a complete point. The minutes, which are the focus of my learned friend's attack here in terms of what's missing, what went wrong, summarizes that exact position. There, page ninety, supplementary bundle. Well, page eighty-nine is where this. Under number six, side to Ashley. First paragraph deals head-on with what happened at the first meeting. Acknowledges that they were minded to approve but defer. So my friend says, no backing with the point of change. But there's the first acknowledgement of the evidence. Then reference to the green sheet. And then this paragraph, which, again, I don't want to read it out, but just paraphrases the points I've just taken you two in the transcript. Several members who had expressed the view at the previous meeting the application should be granted, said that having considered the matter further, they're now of the opposite view. The reasons varied, including precedent, public reasons and the development request on Greenfield land. Other members didn't change that. And then the resolution. So what's missing?
Well, I think the only thing that's missing is a formal recording of the importance of keeping your consistency.
Yes, and can I say upfront that I accept that's not there? But there is no proposition in any of the cases that says that that must be there in form rather than in substance.
Yeah.
And the form is irrelevant if the substance is there and the substance is amply there in recognizing in the first paragraph that there has been a change of mind and in the third paragraph by explaining. The importance of the principle is recognized and given proper deference by complying with the duty to grasp the nettle. It's substance not for. That's ground two.
Yes, thank you.
Ground three, proposition of law first of all. The cases in Lewis, chapter eleven of the authorities' bundle. At points in the exchanges this morning. Here, what was being said was that what really matters is what the man on the clapping of the bus or person on the clapping of the bus might have thought, going to have a look at all this. But that's not the test or closed mind in this context. The test is clear pointers in, and that comes from Lewis. And there's a reason for that.
So it's different from Porter and McGill, is it?
Yes.
It's a gloss on Porter and McGill.
It's because members of a planning committee are politicians. They're not acting quasi-judicially.
No.
They're likely to have a predisposition. They're not allowed predetermination. But they are likely to have a predisposition. And therefore, this is paragraph sixty-two and sixty-three of Lewis.
Can you just give me the page reference?
Yes, it's page two, seven, six, my lord.
Thank you.
Paragraph sixty-two. Difference may however arise from more fundamental difference about the role of elected councillors in the planning process. And then a few lines further down. When taken into account, councillors must have regard to two considerations and so on. And then last sentence of sixty-two. They're not however required to cast aside views on planning policy they would have formed when seeking election or when acting as councillors. The test is a very different one from that to be applied to those in a judicial or quasi-judicial position. And then sixty-three, they're elected to implement planning policies. They can probably take part in debates. Common ground that in the case of some, they're likely to have an entitlement disposition in favor of granting permission. And then this sentence, it is possible to infer a place mind or the real risk that a mind is playing from the circumstances. Given the role of councillors, clear pointers are in mind if the state of mind is not yet to have become a closed or apparently closed mind at the time of the decision. But it's something other than just what the man on the clapping or person on the clapping of the bus would have thought of that. But may I say now, that our submission is that even if the person on the clapping of the bus was asked to look at this, they would conclude that what the twelve points show is an anxiety on the part of officers and members to ensure that the constitutional process was followed properly and that the effect of the resolution is respected. All options remain open.
Well, there's also my lord's point, which is that the most you could say, even if you were to assume that the chair had a closed mind, there's nothing to show that any of the others did.
Quite so.
Quite the opposite.
Quite so. My lord, I don't, unless I'm prepared to go into all twelve of the points.
No.
I've done that in a number of places in the bundle. There's an answer for Your Lordship to accept the answer. I'm prepared to leave to the papers. But just a couple of points if I may, on the points as they're put together per skeleton arguments. Paragraph sixty-one. I have that skeleton separately, although this is a version of the bundle without that.
Yeah.
I don't mean that some courses, mine was equally. And powers rather. But paragraph sixty-one, the paramphylus present at the time of second resolution brought in sharp focus by the following features, in A and B. Look, A deals with the absence of further reasons or reasons in the further report. I've dealt with that already, so I don't need to go there. I've said what I want to say about that. But say that, I want to say this if I may. That the constitutional code of good practice does not require the inclusion of reasons in the draft report. In the further reports, sorry. That is wrong. The Constitution says no such thing. And then at B, what is described as astonishing correspondence. This is the point about the interchange between Councillors Sosa, McCrory, Mr Holmes and so on. If this is the high watermark of ground three, it is, my friend say, a mischaracterization of that exchange. Almost every reference is incorrect. Kirsty Dugald doesn't ask any member what they wanted the report to look like. She asks her superior, Anthony Holmes. She's perfectly entitled to do nothing improper about that. She doesn't ask for a steer. That's Counselor Sosa. Nor does she say, in two thirds of the way through sixty-one B, is this okay or do you want something more overt? That's Mr Holmes. And when he asks that, he's asking about the procedural position, all options being open, et cetera. So if that is the high watermark of ground three, then in my submission, it gets nowhere, not least or exactly the points made a few times. So even if Counselor Sosa's involvement in that interchange closed to the high watermark, well, how do we present?
Felted against all the way along.
So, my lord. So, my lord, unless there are any of those twelve points that you want to hear from me directly. Don't propose any more about ground three, just the last point if I may about what's being asked for in this case, for no other reason, it's just to highlight the extent to which the appellant is constrained to ask for things that are essentially impossible. And it's paragraph sixty-four of my lady friend's skeleton argument. Which is the suggestion that this court ought to, by way of relief, order the local authority to grant planning permission for the development.
Most we could do is quash it and send it back, quash the second resolution.
And my lady, if your logic to again, positions against me on the substance, then that's the right way. Granting planning permission is not something.
Thank you very much indeed. Yes, very good.
Well, just some brief points by way of reply, really in the order that my lady friend developed his submissions. Looking at the constitution first, may supplemental bundle page sixteen. It's a point that harks back to whether, at the conclusion of the first meeting, there was a form of decision beyond procedural deferral or not. And I simply invite attention to this feature of the constitution. At five point two point seven point two, there is a restriction that only those members of the committee present at both meetings can vote on the reason for the decision, should that come to be decided upon. It is not easy to see, in terms of administrative law, what the purpose is of that restriction if the situation is that in the first meeting, there is no decision of any substance at all. It is simply a matter of a preliminary view.
Well, my reaction would be quite the contrary, that if you've got a binding decision at the first one, it doesn't matter who turns up for the second one.
Right.
Well, on our analysis.
What am I missing?
If there is no substantive decision being made on the first occasion, then there is no reason to seek to ensure that there is over.
Yes, there is, you want continuity.
Yeah.
You want the decision only to be taken by people who've been there throughout.
Well, that is more important, I say, in circumstances where we know that they can't grant the application at the first meeting, because they don't have the conditions, for example, for them. So they're not going to be able to complete the process, but they can start the process. And it's the fact that they've started the process and taken the first decision along the steps, which requires then the conditions, for example, to be drawn and contemplated, that shows why it is important to have the same group of individuals, and certainly in terms of the voting, the same group of eligible individuals, on the second occasion. If nothing of any substance has been done on the first occasion.
Yeah, but with respect, Mr Bigland, as we've seen in this case, the representations were made at the first meeting, and further representations aren't going to be allowed, or at any rate going to be severely limited. No oral representations, et cetera. And so, speaking for myself, that seems at least one good reason why you want the same decision makers. You don't swap the members of the jury halfway through their deliberation.
Yeah, on the basis that there has been a step along the way to a final decision, and therefore it's important to keep the constitution of the decision makers, so far as you can.
It's just that they've heard half the argument.
Yeah. There's certainly no step along the way if it's a jury.
Well, I understand your point, that the step along the way may not necessarily involve the making of any decision, either an actual decision or a decision in principle or anything. It may just be a simple procedural matter. If you've had two hours of going through the representations, which is not going to be repeated, it would seem quite a bad idea to allow people who just popped in halfway through the second stage to contribute to the vote.
My lord, that's the way I'd put it.
Yeah.
I say important, sorry, is that it's a process in motions. In relation to the second report, a point was made, fairly made, that the second report, whilst it doesn't have any draft reasons for approval, does set out the conditions. But what it doesn't do, and again, I invite a short review with the other similar reports that we put within the bundle, what it doesn't do is contain any discussion about those conditions, their likely acceptability, and so on. Again, for the reasons that I developed earlier, we say that's important when the prime elements of the discussion ought to have been conditions in section one oh six. That is another notable feature, we say, of that second report. In relation to the minutes of the second report, sorry, the minutes of the second decision, at page ninety of the supplemental bundle, the point has been made by both of us that in relation to the transcripts, what the transcript can't do because of cross is provide the reasons for the decision. So insofar as one looks for satisfaction of the North Wiltshire test, then because that needs to come from the reasons of the decision, that needs to come from the minutes rather than the transcripts that are available in relation to the second meeting. On that basis, and I accept two things about this. First, there is no magic form of words that needs to be used in relation to the second man requirement. And I accept that it's a matter of substance and not form. Both those things being said, what I say you cannot detect from the minutes of the second meeting is a freestanding recognition in any form of words of the value of consistency itself. And that is one of the two limbs of the test. In relation to the grasping of the intellectual nettle, my lady friend says, what nettle is there to grasp in the absence of there being clear minutes drawn up showing the reasons for the deferral? In relation to that, the court has a submission I made earlier, that it would be a very odd outcome of the application of the consistency process for a planning authority's position to be advanced by the fact that it had to comply with a necessary part of its constitution in that respect. But also, just some references to take away in relation to the King's Cross case and the pointer that was given there, and in the St Albans case, about consideration of whether or not there are good reasons for a departure or a change. And in both cases, the court was at pains to point out, but the good reason formulation is not a test of law, but it's a recognition of the practical realities, that if there has been a decision or a view taken at an earlier point in time in relation to a planning application, then in order to justify the change, there does need to be normally a good reason. And the cases give examples of how that good reason can arise.
Surely you're not submitting that it wouldn't be a good reason to say, oh, we didn't realise the first time round that the implications were that you'd be building on a lot of greenfield land?
My lady, I wouldn't make that submission if it were clear that there had been a substantial misunderstanding in that respect. And one of the reasons that the position here is not as straightforward as one of which is that it seems that the green sheet that was supplied to the committee was controversial to a degree, and the court has seen what Mr Hopkins wrote about the timing of the production of the green sheets and the limited ability, both on behalf of the interested party to respond to it, and also in relation to Mr Blacker, it's not clear that Mr Blacker saw the green sheet before the second meeting at all. But what we do have in the papers is a later letter that was generated, if we'll just find the reference, which addresses this issue. And if we look at pages one-three-one and one-three-two of the supplemental bundle, what we can see there is a letter of the ninth of February twenty twenty-one to Mr Hopkins from the planning agents, and simply to observe that having not had, as it were, the opportunity to respond fully in writing to the green sheet, on page one-three-two, under point two, second paragraph down from there, a paragraph indicating that in fact, the extent to which there's development on undeveloped open space may have been controversial in the measurements that were given, but I accept that that repast, as it were, was not before the committee at the time. What is not clear, bearing in mind that, as my lady friend accepts, the first officer report did address this issue, the extent to which the level of change could really support the idea that there was a good reason for the change. But I accept that plainly, within the transcript, some of the councillors relied upon that. The minute is less clear, I would submit, in that respect, and it is really vague in relation to the basis upon which the members were changing their minds. It doesn't have the level of specificity that would easily demonstrate good reasons for a change of mind. One of the points that was addressed was what minded to means, where it arises within resolutions, what it means when it arose in this particular case. And Mr Cannon fairly says that he's not suggesting in this case there was some third option, like the deferral that I mentioned earlier, due to a need for further information. In this case, when we look at the transcript, we look at the way that the issue was being approached, the choice was between approve so far as we can at the moment, or refuse, and so I simply rehearse that point. Point was made about councillor Fresco, of course, at the second meeting, if the state of affairs is that there is one remaining councillor who is articulating a case in favour of the proposal, and is following three individuals who have already expressed a negative case against him, and in light of an officer report which sets out in section one, all options are open and so on, and councillor Fresco, who would have presumed that was put together with the benefit of legal assistance. And it may be seen to place a lot of weight on her shoulders and to draw any inference from the fact that the one person who is still minded to vote in favour, that doesn't pipe up at that stage and say, well, didn't we decide something important in relation to this in an early meeting? One can see that in other circumstances, but perhaps.
They're grown ups. They're grown ups, and this is a grown up committee. If, I mean, your responsibility as a committee member, if you think something's going seriously wrong, is to speak up. And you can't ask us to speculate that there was a silent misery going on.
My lord, I say that it's placing a lot of emphasis on the inaction of one individual in circumstances where it is not uncommon for members to listen respectfully to debate and not necessarily take part, and then vote at the conclusion of the debate. So that's what I say in relation to that. One more reference in relation to the authorities, and it's to address the point that my lady friend makes about cases like St Albans, where there's a previous secretary of state's decision letter supported by an inspector's report, contrast with the King's Cross case, whereas my lady friend accepts that was only one rung further forward from where we are now with a resolution that was closer to fruition. But if one goes to paragraphs ninety-one and ninety-two of the St Albans decision, what you will see there expressed is the idea that the principle of consistency is capable of covering a broad spectrum of different cases, as must be right. And one of the kinds of case, indeed, the first kind of case that Mr Justice Holgate identifies, is the kind of case that involves the same land, similar or same proposals, and so on. And so there is, in terms of the principle of consistency, a number of factual features of this case which indicate that it ought to be brought into play.
It's never in any reported decision, so far as I'm aware, ever been brought into play in the case of a provisional decision one way or the other, which has actually been definitively determined, subject to the provision of further information.
Well, my lady, that's correct as far as.
So it would actually be pushing the envelope if we were to say principle of consistency applies in a case like this, even on your analysis.
My lady, it would be consistent with the overarching purposes
Yeah.
of what consistency is seeking to achieve. And there is, we would say, no principle basis for allowing the example that exists for, for example, King's Cross, and saying that in this case, there is no room for the application of the principle of consistency if I'm right about the nature of the decision that was taken on the first occasion. If that is right, then why is it a substantial extension of the principle to say that those who are reviewing or revisiting that resolution should not pay attention to the fact that very, in the very recent past, a number of their colleagues considered the matter in detail and came to a conclusion upon it?
Well, it depends on the nature of the conclusion. If the conclusion was, final conclusion, which all of the decisions, the reported decisions are about final conclusions on same or similar land. If it's a final conclusion and you're being asked to revisit a final conclusion, I can see the point. If it's provisional, the next hypothesis, everything's up for grabs, so what is there to be consistent about?
But the.
It's still written in water, isn't it?
My lady, I say no for the reasons I developed earlier, but in relation to the King's Cross case, it is worth perhaps bearing in mind that in that case, it was a resolution, and it was a resolution initially subject to two other potential decision makers, who are in the call for decision and looking at it, as well as the potential for a section one oh six to be completed, and that's why the matter went back maybe at a later stage for consideration of the section one oh six.
Yeah.
And so what we say here is that if that principle is engaged, then despite my lady friend's submissions, what as a matter of substance rather than form is still not emerged from the documents is a clear recognition of the importance of the principle of consistency. And so to that extent, we say that the appeal ought to succeed. I don't trespass further in relation to ground three, I've developed those arguments this morning, and you have Mr Cannon's responsibility. Well, may I just turn around? My lord, unless I can assist, that's all I propose to say.
Just so that I'm clear, Mr Cannon, right at the end of his submissions, made a point about the remedy you were seeking. Do you want to say anything about that or do you want to narrow the scope of the remedy you're seeking?
My lord, in relation to the remedy itself, I accept that most the court do is qualify. But what I would observe is that depending on any findings the court makes, there could be, for example, a set of findings that says, well, in fact, what happened at the first meeting wasn't simply written in water, there was a decision at that stage. What ought to have happened under the constitution, if it was functioned correctly, are those residual matters relating to conditions in the section one oh six? And there was never any question in relation to either of those matters. And all of those things could be recorded if those are the findings that the court makes.
All right, thank you very much indeed. We'll just try very briefly to just to consider where we're up to.
Mr Beglin, Mr Cannon, our thanks to both of you for your very helpful submissions orally today and to those behind you for their part in ensuring the case has been so well presented. Very grateful to you all. You'll not be surprised to hear that we will reserve our decisions. In due course, we will circulate a draft of the judgment or judgments. The purpose of that, as usual, simply be for the parties to help us to identify any typographical errors or obvious mistakes, getting names the wrong way around, that kind of thing, not for further argument. And in that regard, could each of you please ensure that my clerk has a copy of the appropriate distribution list for the draft judgment? You'll be well aware of the recent issues which have arisen in one or two cases about inappropriate distribution of the draft. Thereafter, we will aim to hand down the decision in the now familiar remote procedure, so that nobody will need to attend for any further hearing. When we circulate the draft, we'd be grateful if you would please liaise to try to agree an order. If there is any consequential matter which you can't agree between yourselves, would each of you please make brief written submissions to identify the issue and we'll decide whether either further written submissions or a further short hearing may be needed. Unless there's anything you think we've failed to cover, that's, I think, as far as we can take it today.
No, no, very, very good.
Thank you very much.